Good morning and welcome to Chapel Worship at Louisville Seminary. If you are joining us for the first time today, welcome. We are so glad you are here. If you are with us every week in worship, welcome. We are so glad you are here. We have the joy today of being together as a student body, an employee community, and the Board of Trustees are here on campus. And we have the privilege in today's service of installing two of our newest Board members, Dr. Brian Champion and Reverend Dr. Marian McClure-Taylor. Thank you both. We are so excited that you are joining us. We are so grateful for your service. Before we open worship together, I have a few reminders and announcements about the events following chapel today. Immediately after the service, everyone is invited to the Hope Cafe in the Wind Center to join us for a community lunch at 1:00. Lunchtime runs until 2:30 PM when we will start the afternoon session of the Board meeting. That is an open session, so students and employees as well as Board members are welcome and encouraged to attend. There will be a presentation with Chris Meinzler, who is talking about past precedents, current needs, and future possibilities for theological education. And this is jumping ahead, but tomorrow morning, we will all be back bright and early for breakfast at 8:30 AM. Please feel free to join us then as well. And now I invite you in to worship with me. Please join me in the call to worship printed in your bulletins. Breath of God, breath of life, breath of deepest yearning. Come, Holy Spirit, Comforter, Disturber, Interpreter, Enthusser. Come, Holy Spirit, Heavenly Friend, Lamp lighter, Revealer of Truth, Midwife of Change. Come, Holy Spirit, the Lord is here. God's Spirit is with us. Please stand and join us in our opening hymn for the fruit of all creation, Glory to God Hymnal number 36. For the fruit of all creation, thanks be to God. For the gifts to every nation, thanks be to God. For the plowing, sowing, reaping, silent growth while we are sleeping. Future needs in earth, safekeeping, thanks be to God. In the just reward of labor, God's will be done. In the help we give our neighbor, God's will be done. In our worldwide task of caring for the hungry and despairing. In the harvest we are sharing, thanks will be done. For the harvest of the Spirit, thanks be to God. For the good we all inherit, thanks be to God. For the wonders that astound us, for the truths that still confound us. Most of all that love has found us, thanks be to God.
Good morning. We come to this moment, all of us, with many lived experiences, those of joy and sorrow, frustration and success, weary and energetic, and everything in between. And yet, through all these individual experiences and emotions, we have been buried with Christ in baptism in order that we might be raised new to life with Him through faith and power of God. So now, in whatever space and state we find ourselves in, trusting in God's grace, let us confess our sins together with the liturgy printed in your handout. Oh God, you call us to work for a world where all will be fed and have dignity, but we find ourselves distracted by our own desires. You call us to seek justice and peace, but we are satisfied with injustice and discord. You call us to bring liberty to the oppressed, but we do not insist on freedom for all. Forgive us, oh Lord. Show us your ways so that all may know your justice and peace through Jesus Christ. Amen. Here are the good news. As people born of water and the Spirit, we have died to the old life, and a new life has begun. God's grace is poured out upon us day by day. Remember your baptism, be thankful, and live as one who has been raised to a new life. In Jesus Christ, we are forgiven. Thanks be to God.
What a joy to be with you this afternoon. Let us join our hearts in prayer in the Prayer for Illumination. God, as we prepare to hear the words you have for us today, open our hearts to see the things our eyes overlook. Touch our hearts to feel the things our hands cannot touch. And attune our hearts to hear the words of wisdom you have for us today. Amen. The lectionary text from the Gospels this day comes from Matthew, the 12th chapter, verses 15 to 21. Jesus draws near, and He is complicated. Listen now to God's Word. When Jesus became aware of this, He departed. Many crowds followed Him, and He cured all of them. And He ordered them not to make Him known. This was to fulfill what had been spoken through the prophet Isaiah. Here is my servant whom I have chosen, my beloved, with whom I am well pleased. I will put my spirit upon him, and he will proclaim justice to the Gentiles. He will not wrangle or cry aloud, nor will anyone hear his voice in the streets. He will not break a bruised reed or quench a smoldering wick until he brings justice to victory. And in His name the Gentiles will hope. This is the Word of the Lord. Fred Craddock was a renowned preacher and teacher of preaching for many years. Later in his life, he reflected, looking back, this way. When I was a young man, I wanted to be a good preacher. When I was middle-aged, I wanted to be a great preacher. And when I was older, I found myself wanting to be a Christian. What does it mean to be a Christian? Ironically, that's exactly one of the questions that Dr. Drew Smith posed to us last night in the Greenhoe Lecture. What does it mean to be a Christian? In today's Gospel text, we learn part of the answer. It means to follow Jesus. You see, just at the close of the passage before this one, the Pharisees are growing disgruntled, and even worse than that, they become downright angry. And so the last verse we read in Matthew's Gospel before this morning's passage is, "And they conspired that they might destroy Him." That's the terrible context of this passage. And then we hear, "Jesus departed, and many crowds followed Him." That's one of the most basic and also most profound definitions of what it means to be a Christian, to follow Jesus. That's who we are and what we are about, and to follow Jesus means an awful lot of things. It involves serendipity and surprise and providence in places and ways that we never anticipated. Sometimes it demands determination and persistence, even stubbornness. It was easily 25 or 30 years ago. I was serving a wonderful church in Indianapolis, and one of the officers of the church had finally made Vice President. He'd gotten that long-desired promotion in the firm where he had worked so long for so hard. And in the very next season, answering God's call, he moved his wife and their two young children into student housing here at Louisville Seminary. That's the story for so many of us, especially students and faculty and staff. We come from all kinds of places to answer God's call and to follow Jesus. So Gavin has come from Utah, Mika from Iowa, Tommy from Florida, Sabrina from Ghana and Italy and Georgia. It's amazing. It's amazing the way God calls and the goodness we discover as we answer and follow. To follow Jesus indeed means a whole lot of things. We keep following even when Jesus is not at all what we hope or desire or expect. This summer, I was trying to help out the pastor at the church that Ann and I are a part of. She was going to be away one Sunday. I offered to fill the pulpit. She really gladly took me up on that. And I was glad too, until I read the Gospel lectionary text for that day. And just like this afternoon, I try to keep myself honest. I try to preach from the lectionary. Sometimes I look at it and go, huh. And on this occasion, I read it and went, ooh. Because here's what Jesus said in that text on that Sunday. "I've come to bring fire, not peace. I've come to bring division." In the summer of 2025, I got to preach a sermon about judgment. We're invited to follow Jesus in all kinds of strange places. But fortunately today, we have a passage about the Jesus who is tender and who offers healing. We hear this story about how the people who follow Jesus are cured of all their diseases. This passage points to the justice and the hope that is a key part of the Gospel of Jesus Christ. Today, Jesus draws near. But if we listen, if we listen closely, if we would follow, we discover that it's really complicated. You see, there are layers and layers and layers to the Gospel of Jesus Christ. It's like all kinds of levels at a fancy layer cake that you might see at a highbrow wedding reception. It's a little bit like the tiers of a really delicious tiramisu. You and I learn by following through all these layers and layers of Jesus that there's always more to it than we might first imagine or I might truly want. Worship the Lord your God and serve only the Lord. Repent, for the Kingdom of Heaven has drawn near. Follow me, and I will make you fish for people. You are the salt of the earth and the light of the world. Let your yes be yes, and your no be no. If someone strikes you on your right cheek, turn your other cheek also. Do not worry. Do not worry about today or tomorrow. Let tomorrow take care of itself. Where your treasure is, there your heart will be also. I desire mercy, not sacrifice. Follow me, and let the dead bury the dead. All those invitations and instructions from the lips of Jesus and the New Testament scholars among us are already thinking, and those are just from the first nine chapters of the Gospel of Matthew. And the theology faculty out there may be considering all the different aspects of that wide variety of thoughts and reflections. It's complicated. Last month, I had the distinct pleasure and privilege of preaching and then speaking at a church in a different part of the United States. They realized there at a juncture that they need to be all about strategic vision, thinking about what truly is our mission in this time and place in the name of Jesus Christ? What are our core values that we lift up beyond any others? And I was so taken by the reality that they chose this as their theme, curiosity and courage. To follow Jesus means always to wonder, always to be curious, always to lean forward on the edge of our seats, to try to discern and discover what it is that God is calling us to in this moment, in this season, what neighborhood, what people, what need. And then the courage, the determination, sometimes even the stubbornness, to answer that call. Here is Jesus Christ, God's servant, whom the Spirit has chosen. Here is Jesus Christ, God's beloved, with whom the Lord is well pleased. Here is Jesus, and He is complicated. I think the pressing bothersome question for me this day, and perhaps for you, is, are we determined to travel with Jesus? I think about our lives, many of us, as American Presbyterian Christians. I think about my life, and it seems so very neat and easy and tidy. I have the privilege to stand in this beautiful pulpit in this wonderful chapel, out of the rain and the elements, and proclaim the Word of God. I think about how it is this day for Palestinian Christians, for Munder Isaac and Mitri Raheb, for those faithful in the West Bank and Gaza. I think of how it is for my friend Sam, with whom I lost touch. Sam and I worked together in the seminary dining hall. He had been the chaplain general in the army, the Liberian Army. He could no longer go home because after a terrible coup in his homeland, he said to me one day very matter-of-factly, "You know, they would take me off the plane and shoot me right there." Following Jesus is complicated. Jesus will not wrangle or cry aloud. He will not be quarrelsome or self-centered. By His very path, He teaches us that His way is one of humility, always pointing to the needs of others, never putting Himself first. That sounds like crazy talk in this day, crazy talk. Jesus draws near, and it's complicated. He invites us to hope when cynicism and despair seems to be the order of the day, when sometimes I fear about the only thing I've got to offer is some snark, if not disbelief. Jesus invites us to justice when every headline, every reality seems to talk only about money and power, about greed and authority. Jesus invites us to kindness and service, kindness, when we run the risk of being overlooked, ignored, dismissed. What does it mean to be a Christian? I believe it means to follow, to follow through all kinds of difficulties and defeats and somehow discover, in the strange calibration of the Gospel, that we are on a path to the strangest of victories. It means to make our way through all kinds of bad stuff and discover goodness, even on the journey. It means that we follow someone who leads us to death and then resurrection. Isabella Yende is an amazingly gifted Chilean novelist. Many of you are undoubtedly familiar with her work. Isabella Yende had a beloved daughter, her adult daughter Paula, who developed a difficult, difficult, life-threatening illness. She nursed her at home. She cared for her day after day, hour after hour. And then finally, the terrible moment came. No fairy tale, no miraculous deliverance, Paula's death. Later, someone asked her what she would conclude about that terrible journey. Isabella Yende said this. "You know, when you and I get to the end, we discover that the only things we have are the loves we have given away. That's the strange gospel in which you and I have trusted our lives. That is the strange journey on which you and I follow. So this day, siblings in Christ, I pray that you may find determination and stubbornness and courage to the glory of God. And let all God's people say, amen." Let us stand together in body or spirit as we sing hymn number 465, "What a Friend We Have in Jesus."
I would like to invite Brian Champion and Marian McClure-Taylor to come forward, our newest trustees, as we prepare to install them. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and all that is within me. Bless God's holy name. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and forget not all of God's benefits. This is an important occasion. We celebrate your becoming a part of the Board of Trustees of Louisville Seminary. We are grateful to God for your willingness to serve. We give thanks to the Holy Spirit for equipping you spiritually for this service. And we are grateful to the church and the seminary for your being selected as a trustee charged with this responsibility. Brian and Marian, you have been elected to serve the Presbyterian Church USA as members of the Board of Trustees of Louisville Presbyterian Theological Seminary. Be assured that you are not alone. More than 100 years of significant history with thousands of persons as students, faculty, and trustees have all come together to give you this and trustees have all come together to give you this privileged responsibility for service. You are not alone because you are surrounded by the past and you are its heir. You are not alone because you are sustained by the providence of God and the Holy Spirit. You are not alone because you are part of a committed community dedicated to educating people for the high calling of the ministry of Jesus Christ. We welcome you to our common mission.
Brian and Marion, we were grateful to you for your dedication to Christ, for your commitment to the church, and for your willingness to serve on this board of vision, interpretation, and preservation. We covet your prayers, your wise counsel, and your conscientious support and leadership of this seminary community.
Those of us who have come here to prepare for several forms of ministry express our thanks as well. We earnestly desire that you conduct the affairs of the board so that our education may be excellent and our life together may be nurturing.
For those of us who are responsible for the academic pursuit of Christian knowledge and experience, I express our gratitude for your commitment to this service. We sincerely hope that you will continue to enrich the spirit of freedom in educational affairs maintained by this institution. At the same time, we welcome your advice, your honest criticism, and your sincere support of our endeavors, for you are our partners in this meaningful service.
Brian and Marion, you have heard these words of gratitude to God and of welcome to you from members of this seminary community. If you are ready to respond, will you answer the following questions? Do you now reaffirm your faith in Jesus Christ as your Lord and Savior? Do you? Do you now promise to faithfully serve Christ's Church in this particular way as a member of the Board of Trustees of Louisville Presbyterian Theological Seminary? Do you? Will you enter into the responsibility with integrity, with prayer, with faith, with hope, with love, and with imagination? Will you? And now to the trustees and the seminary community. Pages are sticking together. Do you now promise to support these new members of the Board of Trustees? Will you provide cooperation and Christian concern, appreciation, and mutual striving for faithfulness in this ministry to which we all have been called? Do we?
We do.
Let us pray. Lord God of all, by your providence, we are brought to this moment and have been called to this office within your church. Bless us all. Make us happy in this ministry. Where we presume too much, bring us up short. Where we presume too little, quicken our spirits to nobler heights. Give us such a concern for our common goal that differences may never divide and disagreements may never lead to disagreeableness. Alert our minds that they may decide wisely. Open our hearts that they may serve lovingly. Inspire our souls that they may be dedicated to the truth that you have revealed to us in Christ. Strengthen us in every way to do your will at this time and in this place. In the name of our servant Lord, amen. Brian and Marion, you are now members of the Board of Trustees of Louisville Presbyterian Theological Seminary. Again, welcome. We are all one in the service of Jesus Christ. May God bless us and keep us and all those who serve in places near and far. In the power of the Holy Spirit, amen.
And now a blessing from the student body. Brian and Marion, as you step into this important role on the LPTS Board of Trustees, we invite you to carry forward the trust placed in you with dedication and heart. Your commitment to care for this community goes beyond governance. It is about being partners and friends to the students, faculty, and staff who live and breathe this campus every day. We ask that you hold us in your prayers and encouragement, recognizing the challenges and joys we face as we pursue theological education together. May you bring your time, talents, and gifts, not only to support the whosoever mission of LPTS, but also to foster an environment where all voices are heard and valued. We look forward to walking alongside you as we work together to nurture faith, learning, and service in this place. Thank you, truly thank you, for answering this call with generosity and vision. May your stewardship be steady and patient, like the tending of a garden, nurturing what is good, enduring through seasons of change, and rooting care for all that grows here. Thank you.
To the administration, trustees, faculty, students, staff, alumni, and guests of the Louisville Presbyterian Theological Seminary. Did I get them all? Today marks a significant moment in the life of our seminary. We gather not only to celebrate the installation of Brian and Marion as trustees, but also to reaffirm our shared commitment to the mission, vision, and values that define this sacred community. As we install these trustees, I charge the entire seminary community, administration, faculty, students, staff, alumni, trustees, and stakeholders, to unite in support of their work. Trustees cannot fulfill their responsibilities alone. We require your prayers, your counsel, your collaboration, and your honest engagement. Let us remember that leadership flourishes in an environment of trust, transparency, and mutual respect, and shared commitments. Some of these commitments are the commitment to mission. Let us recommit ourselves to the seminary's mission: to educate people to proclaim the gospel, to care for all, and to work for justice in communities everywhere. As the seminary community, we share this sacred charge. May our actions and decisions always strive to reflect our devotion to this calling. The commitment to integrity. Integrity must be the foundation of all our endeavors. The entire community should strive for honesty and openness in every interaction. The commitment to hospitality and inclusion. Our seminary must be a place where every person is welcomed, valued, and heard. As a community, we will strive to help cultivate a culture of hospitality and inclusion, ensuring that this community, wherever it resides, reflects the love and justice at the heart of our faith. In other words, whosoever. And finally, the commitment to excellence. We will pursue excellence in teaching, learning, governance, and service while inspiring the seminary community to stretch towards its highest ideals. As we move forward together, let us embrace the opportunities and challenges ahead. May the Spirit of truth, compassion, vision, and love be present in all we do. Led by the Holy Spirit, may we continue to build a seminary that shines as a beacon of learning, faith, and service for generations to come. May God bless each of us in your calling, and may God bless the Louisville Presbyterian Theological Seminary. Let the people of God say, amen.
Please join us in singing hymn number 692, "In the Glory to God," Spirit, open my heart.
Spirit, open my heart to the joy and pain of living. As you love me, I love in receiving and in giving. Spirit, open my heart. God, replace my stony heart with a heart that's kind and tender. Oh, my coldness and fear, to your grace I now surrender. Spirit, open my heart to the joy and pain of living. As you love me, I love in receiving and in giving. Spirit, open my heart. Ride your love upon my heart. As my love, my gold, my story, in each thought, word, and deed. May my living bring you glory. Spirit, open my heart to the joy and pain of living. As you love me, I love in receiving and in giving. Spirit, open my heart. May I weep with those who weep. Share the joy of sister, brother, in the welcome of Christ. May we welcome one another. Spirit, open my heart to the joy and pain of living. As you love me, I love in receiving and in giving.
Go now in peace to enjoy a good lunch together. Go now in peace, and may the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ, the love of God Almighty, and the power and presence of God the Holy Spirit be with you this day and lead you, lead you to surprise and serendipity and providence as we follow our resurrected Lord. And all God's people say, amen.